Good evening, welcome to the June 1st, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 5:30 discussing personnel matters and then we just began with a 6:30 reception to honor our tenure teachers tonight. The, okay, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions?
Michael Cooper.
Lynn Lundharp.
Joanne Cunningham.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Christine Beck.
Diane Stever.
And Judy Keough.
And Charmaine Wiger-Singer is unable to be with us this evening, she had a work commitment. Next on the agenda is the appointment of our tenure candidates. Bethlehem, as everyone knows, is a very solid academic school. We hire the best and the brightest. They go through a rigorous interview process and so in order to even get hired here, you're a top candidate, I would say. And tonight, we're going to recognize those staff members that have successfully completed their tenure. So, turn it over to you.
If you want to have the boards.
Yeah, if you will, when you come up, we'll announce you and the board will recognize you.
Are they going to get an eagle pin also?
Good evening, thanks everyone for being here and to the tenure candidates, really congratulations. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the years, see your growth and they're just all amazing, amazing faculty and staff that we have here. So it's really a pleasure to award your tenure this evening and it's so nice to see many of your family members, even the littlest ones who are here tonight as well. So, I'd like to first recognize Kelly Burlile who is receiving tenure in the special education tenure area. And she really earned it because she had to work with Dave Kay for the last couple of years. Next, I'd like to award tenure to Dave Domell as a hall principal here at the high school. Next, I'd like to recognize Meshu Grogan in the area of foreign language. Jessica Harris is being awarded tenure as a school psychologist. Anthony Malicia is being awarded tenure as a hall principal again here at the high school. Kate Penicia is being awarded tenure in the area of foreign language, or sorry, speech. And Shayna is being awarded tenure in the area of foreign language. Again, congratulations to all of our tenure candidates tonight and do you need some photo ops, Saber? So we have to do a few photo ops, so if family members, if you want to get any, you're welcome
We're going to hit both.
Should we pour?
Pyramid is good.
Yeah, that's fine.
they'd like to. They're more than welcome to stay, but.
Some had dinner reservations.
We need to make that official, too. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, A through F for tenure appointments.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries. Great. You officially did it. One other thing, are there any students here that are participation in government students? Okay. You're getting in under the wire, huh? Is it the last meeting before you have to have it in, right? What they say, better late than never, right? Your requirement is to stay to nine o'clock. If the meeting's still going on at nine, we'll take a break, let you come up, there'll be sign out sheets for you and if you have any forms that you need a board member to sign, we'll be here to do that for you. If the meeting gets over prior to nine, just come up at that time and do the sign Approval of the minutes of the June?
Second.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes for the May 18th, 2016 regular board meeting. First and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Do we have a student senate representative to address us tonight? No? Okay, we'll move on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. Bike to school day challenge, I just wanted to let everyone know that over 350 students participated in this across four counties in New York on the 2016 Bike to School Day. And the winner of the challenge for Albany County was Hamagrail Elementary School with 130 kids. And they'll receive a trophy called the Wheel of Knowledge. Also, masterminds are champions, Wednesday, May 25th, the Bethlehem Central High School Masterminds team won the Capital Region Championships held at Sienna College and they are moving on to represent the Capital Region at the New York State Championship on June 11th at Lemoine College in Syracuse. If they win this year, it will be their third consecutive win and our sixth championship. And senior Eric Wolfsburg was named the Capital Region's All Tournament MVP. The team is coached by Paul O'Reilly, so congratulations. And we have a few other student recognitions we'd like to showcase for the board.
Yes, and we will bring you up for pins.
So, we'll start with our, is it Congressional Art students? Yes. Our Congressional Art students here? Yes. So if Sylvia Leary, Katherine Wyman, and Sarah Davis could come up, they were all recognized for the Congressional Art exhibit. And I'd also like, okay, so these students, Maya De Palaso Martinez and Enrique Lopez, are you both here this evening? They were recognized from Questar III, this was an award scholarship that they received about a month ago and I received a letter from Questar III asking that we recognize them here in the district, so it looks like they were not able to be here this evening. Our National Merit Scholarship finalists, I'm guessing are here with us this evening, Phoebe Amory, Will Verriere, Lila Johnson, Iris Joe, Johan Molonsen, Kai Bo Kue, Robert Rillard, and Eric Wolfsburg Kukumata. We'd like to recognize these students. I know it's a busy time of year, so many of the students have other things they're participating in. I also want to recognize a student donation, Desiree, are you here? Desiree Lervie? We have a donation, stand up. She was able to provide the district with a sound system donation, it's actually on the agenda for later, for acceptance by the board. The sound system was, Desiree, correct me if I'm wrong, about $4,000. And it was to basically enhance the experience for our students in the theater program so that they could hear the sound quality better onstage, correct? Okay, so thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Jody. And again, congratulations to all the students that were recognized tonight. I think at the last board meeting, I mentioned specifically the Congressional Art show and the work that was on display there by all the students was phenomenal, so congratulations to them. One thing that we've done since the last board meeting, the Board of Education had gone out and visited, each of us went to a different school one afternoon and got time to spend with the staff and the students and the administration and our respective buildings that we went to visit with. And then we came back here to the high school and kind of had a, you know, a recap of the day and really talked about what we had seen and what I saw was an excellent educational system in play with great staff and students that were well behaved, well engaged, and just enjoying their day. I thought it was great, so. Anyone else like to add stuff to that?
Ms. Monroe and I were able to be at the Capital Area School Boards Association final meeting for this year and they give out scholarships to students and unfortunately, I left my program on my desk at work, so I don't have the name of the student who got it from the district, but I want to congratulate her on that. And unfortunately, because of work obligations, I couldn't go to our award ceremony that was held last week.
Last Thursday, right, yeah. We had that too and we did recognize that recipient here that night, too. Which was phenomenal, the number of scholarships that are handed out by various entities and organizations to the students here and it just shows their dedication and hard work. There was one recipient of an ROTC scholarship worth up to almost $180,000 potentially for that student, so. And many other scholarships of thousands to five thousands of dollars and it pays off for the kids to do their hard work and then get recognized for that. Yes?
I went to Glenmont and it was terrific, great, great experience, wonderful to have the opportunity to walk through and spend some time at a elementary school that I'm not really familiar with and I totally agree with your comments, I mean, it's just striking, not just the engagement and you expect an elementary school to be very lively and kind of high energy, but every single teacher I met with was top tier, better than the last, better than the one, I mean, they were all just exceptional. And what was also striking to me is Laura Heffernan, the principal, was remarking about several new teachers and talking about how terrific they were. So, you know, I just feel so proud that we're part of a district that is not only able to hold on to teachers and we had a great ceremony of tenured teachers who are staying here and we're clearly retaining them and they're, you know, a critical part of our, the reason we're such a great district, but we're also attracting new talent and really impressive. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Bike to School Day, I'm so happy that we were recognized. It was especially noteworthy because it was a really rainy nasty day and we had, and Dave Kay was out there, I was out there, we had kids in raincoats and gear and we still had a huge turnout in the numbers, so it's great that we were recognized in Albany County, that's a wonderful thing. And I just want to, one other thing I noticed, I don't know how many of us kind of looked through the comments from the vote, folks probably remember after you cast your ballot, you could go and spend some time on the computer. The comments were very interesting, I thought. A lot of them were constructive, a lot of them sort of, well, a small number kind of read like the comments you would read, you know, on some Google article, so a little out there, which I thought was kind of interesting. But some interesting themes kind of popped up and one that I thought was a perception that I think if you spend time coming to these meetings and listening to the board and the presentations, you wouldn't see, and that is a perception that, you know, we focus so much exclusively on athletics, which I thought was interesting because I feel like the district spends a lot of time and effort and energy and resources and we do a lot of recognizing of the music and arts and theater programs and the academic achievements as well, as we did tonight. So, you know, I know that wasn't planned because we do that all the time, so I guess I would encourage people who might have a certain perception to, you know, spend time coming to the meetings or watching them because you really do get a big sense of the breadth of what the district is spending its time and effort and energy on.
And adding to that, I mean, we're always very open and transparent at our meetings and, you know, for people to kind of imply that we're not, but again, I looked at the small proportion of people that actually responded, there were like 218 total people out of the total number that voted, so maybe they had a personal, you know, a personal group.
And some students, a lot of students too respond.
But there were a lot of very positive comments, so I thought that was good.
One of the things, I think, why we had a lower number of people fill out the surveys too, was the location of those, the computers and since we went to the new scanning machines, so we talked about next year perhaps putting them two locations.
That's a good idea.
As a traffic flow, they were kind of in the back and a lot of people, because there weren't lines that they would typically go around there, didn't, I'm not sure they even really saw them, so we could probably set it up differently next year.
Yeah, it was a long, it was a pretty long survey, too. Yeah.
Anyone else? Yeah, Christine.
I had the opportunity to go to the eighth grade pops concert last night and it was a really nice bittersweet end to their musical careers at the middle school and I'm looking forward to hearing the new eighth graders up in ninth grade next year, I'm sure they're going to be tremendous as they always are. And then, two weekends ago, Mr. Euro's VJ Cat Once in a Lifetime production over the weekend occurred and I really encouraged everybody to go out and see it, it was a bunch of skits put together, some were Monty Python, but what was really impressive is the improv portion that they did at the end, so the kids got up there and did quite a bit of improv. And it's really impressive, if you see these kids year after year and how far they've come from being freshmen to seniors and what's done in this theater program, it truly is amazing and these kids leave with confidence that they didn't have when they entered some of these theater programs. So I just wanted to say thank you, it was a pleasure to see it this year and I look forward to it every year. And I went to Elsmere this year and spent the afternoon with Kate Kloss, who's the principal of Elsmere, and that was a great opportunity to see what our kids actually do during the day. And it was different from classroom to classroom, curriculum to curriculum, some were floating a rock in one class, one was looking at electrical charges in another class, and then there was a special ed class that I got to look at for quite a bit of time and to see what our teachers truly do on a day-to-day basis was amazing. You don't always see it, you don't appreciate it, but when you get to spend an afternoon watching it, not just going in for your own kid, but to see the teachers really working hard, it was a great experience and I hope I get to do it again soon, so, thanks.
Anyone else?
I'll just say, I was at the middle school, which of course was a little different than visiting an elementary school. Mr. Warford and I spoke a little bit, but then I was basically on my own, which was fine, which was fine, but I wanted to see the Common Core learning standards in action, so I visited some classes in both English and math and were, you know, I was very impressed at what was going on and how the students were all engaged in what was going on in class. I was really impressed. And then, visited special ed class, too, again, you know, like you said Christine, you can really appreciate the hard work that, especially in special ed classes, that teachers have to do. And I think it gave a good picture of what was going on, very positively, in the middle school.
Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation, we have two tonight, the first presentation will be a Career and Technical Education Program Review. Dave Hurst will be giving that to us.
Okay, thank you and good evening. So, one of the things that we took on as a task this year is we're looking at several of our programs and we're reviewing them, sort of looking at the last five years and projecting out the next five years. So this year, we're looking at CTE programs, we're looking at our health programs and we're looking at our special education programs. So tonight, I'm going to just present some of our findings from our CTE program review to give you sort of a snapshot of the things that we currently offer and some things that we're looking at down the road. So, CTE, a lot of people sort of still think of this as sort of like a Vo-Tech program, so now we refer to it as Career and Technical Education, but it basically allows students to get academic experience in areas other than just sitting in a classroom. And we handle that in a variety of ways, some of our students do that right here in Bethlehem, some of our students do that by working out in internships, some of our students do that through their own job that they currently hold, they're able to earn credit back through that, and some of our students attend the Capital Region BOSI's programs that are held out of district. And one of the exciting things that the state has been working on is alternate pathways for students to graduate. I think it's pretty apparent to everyone that not all students are going to be successful in completing a traditional high school program where they pass five Regents exams, you know, and are tracked to go to, you know, a two-year, four-year college. So the state is looking at alternate ways for students to obtain high school credit and one of those pathways is the so-called CTE pathway, which would allow students to only have to pass four of the required Regents exams and then receive that extra fifth credit by completing a CTE sequence or, you know, in a state-approved exam. So for instance, a student might do a two-year auto mechanic program, they might take the National Industry Standard Automotive Examination, pass that examination and then that would count as one of their five Regents exams. So you can see, you know, the state is really looking for more flexibility in terms of allowing students to graduate from high school without having to follow sort of our traditional path. So in terms of programs, you can see at the high school, we have a very wide range, arrangement of offerings. Now, on a year-to-year basis, not all of these programs run, they're really, you know, student interest-driven, but we have really three different categories, we have what we refer to as Career and Business Ed, Technical Ed, and then Family and Consumer Sciences. And that allows students to get, you know, a whole host of experiences in different areas that they might be interested in in terms of looking down the road, are these things they might want to end up going to a two-year technical school for, some of these do translate into four-year schools and some of these even translate into just being ready to move right into the marketplace. So a lot of different experiences students are able to take advantage of right here on campus. You know, knowing that there aren't, we can't offer everything and anything, so there are opportunities for our students to attend similar type courses off-campus. And one of the ways that they can do that is at the Capital Region BOSI's Technical School, Career and Technical School, they run those in two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and that allows students to still be able to basically come here, they take the bus over in the morning, attend classes there, and then they come back and finish out their day here to make sure that they meet all of their requirements. Or some students attend classes here in the morning and then shuttle off to Albany for the afternoon session so they can, you know, it's sort of a blended learning experience. You can see there's a whole, you know, variety of courses that are available there. The ones that are highlighted in red are similar to some of the ones that aren't highlighted in red and the difference being the ones in red are really, for seniors that sort of decide last minute that this is something that they're interested in, it allows them to get a really quick one-year experience and then immediately go into a workplace environment. So like Carpentry Services, it's a one-year sort of quick, you know, bare bones curriculum that would allow them to then take a job as in the construction field, whereas something like Building Trades, there's Part 1, Part 2, students would take that over a two-year timeframe, a little bit more extensive, so similar mindset, but the ones in red allow students to immediately move into a position in the field. So just to give you an idea of what types of courses from this menu that our students are taking advantage of, we have 55 students that are looking to attend the Career and Technical School next year and it's kind of hard to see up there, but, you know, our largest number of students, we have 12 students either attending Cosmetology 1 or 2, so that's about, you know, almost a quarter of our students and then sort of more moving around the wheel. You can see, you know, there's 14 or so different courses that students are looking into, some of them have multiple levels, as you can see, a lot of them are Part 1, Part 2, so students will do Part 1 as a junior, Part 2 as a senior. You know, some of these are highly technical, like the Computer Network Technician is the Cisco certification, which allows students to move into setting up computer networks right out of this program and that can actually be pretty lucrative in terms of, you know, the pay coming out of one of those programs. We still have Welding and Metal Fabrication, tends to be fairly popular with our students, as is Criminal Justice. One of the programs that they're looking to do next year is to move some of these, so you can see the Welding and Metal Fabrication are looking to move to Mahanesson, they're looking to also offer some new courses in what we're calling the Center for Advanced Technology at Mahanesson. Next year would be the first year this program runs and this is one I really want to focus on tonight because this program's not really, it's not without its challenges. You know, to get from here to Mahanesson, you're talking an hour bus ride, so for our students to, you know, realistically make it to an 8-10 session, they'd have to leave campus here at about seven o'clock to realistically make it over there. That being said, they're probably not going to get back here till almost noon, so now you're cutting down on their availability to take classes in the afternoon. Likewise, students that go over for the afternoon session, they basically can only take classes here until about, you know, 9:45-ish to be able to make it over there and then they wouldn't be able to come back and take classes, so there's a transportation challenge because of distance. The other challenge we have is that some of these courses, they still haven't achieved staffing levels at Mahanesson for these courses. So they look great on paper, yes, we want students to go possibly, but they don't even have people to teach them yet. And then the third hurdle deals with, none of the courses have yet been approved as alternate pathways. So students can go take the courses, they'd get a great experience, but it wouldn't fit right now into that four plus one model. So there's sort of three challenges that we're sort of waiting to play out, the program doesn't run till the first time till next year. Right now, we don't have any students that have selected these, which is sort of a good thing, it'll allow us a year to kind of look and see what happens with the program. But one of the things we're going to have to look at moving forward is if we're going to send students to this, what do we do if only one student wants to go? Are we going to run? Are we gonna run a bus all the way to Mahanesson for one student? You know, they've talked about trying to do sort of a, or carpooling, if you will, having districts come together and sending one bus. So maybe we could partner up with Gildanlin and Voorisville and send one bus. There's been talk about everybody meeting at Capital Region BOSI's first and then taking a bus. Well, if it's an hour just to get there, now you start adding extra sort of stops on the way. Now you're talking, you know, an hour and a half. So realistically, can your students even get a full session in over there and still complete coursework over here? So again, this is something that's not starting up until next year. We need to take, kind of keep a close eye on it. But if we do have students that do express an interest in going, one of the decisions we're gonna have to make are, are we willing to support sending a bus over there for one student, for two students? Lynn?
Can I explain why it's at Mahanesson?
Sure.
Because I think it's important, you know, important to understand. Obviously, this would have been at the Career and Technical School in Colony. The program would have been if we could have done the renovations, additions, whatever that, you know, would be required and have all of that, you know, new equipment. However, our infamous tax cap has prevented that from occurring because any costs that are incurred for, you know, for building or renovations at BOSI's is then shared by all the districts. And since all of the districts within BOSI's were having financial issues the last couple of years, you know, we couldn't, you know, couldn't do it. I mean, there was just no way because the tax cap calculation doesn't allow an exemption for, you know, that kind of growth. So Mahanesson was able to actually construct building, you know, that had bond issue, and they're leasing the space to BOSI's so that these type of programs would be available to students, which in the future, I know they can't get enough welders up at Luther Forest, at Global Foundries. I mean, welding is a major shortage, the shortage of people who can do that, as an example. Some of these are great fields for people to go into.
One of the things that I know the committee has talked about is, these are great options. The problem for us, if we're in Schenectady or Niskiuna, Mahanesson's quite, is a shorter ride than to Capital Region BOSI's. For us, in our kids, it's a challenge to get there and, as Dave said, still get in all of the English, the Social Studies, the Phys Ed. So as, you know, Dave said, it's not an issue this year, but it's something we wanted to prize the board of because it is something the committee has been discussing. And whether or not we do end up participating in that program over there or not, I think is really gonna be dependent upon, students have to, this is an elective program, obviously, and students have to be on track for graduation. And if they're not able to get English, Social Studies sci- or PE, then that limits these options for our kids, unfortunately, unless there's a way to work around it.
Has there been any discussion among the superintendents on whether it would be feasible for students who are interested in this program to take courses at Mahanesson so that they don't have to try to fit two schools in one day?
There's been some discussion. I think the issue is that you're then using their taxpayer dollars for our students to take courses, so there would have to be some kind of option through BOSI's to do. But it gets, it gets very complicated because they don't have an open enrollment where, so that's, that's a challenge, but...
But I think it almost sounds like that's the discussion that needs to occur because not just Bethlehem, but, you know, Ravina would have that same issue for Voorisville or Albany that would want to send their children there, so there are students there. So that's what I was thinking, what about them just be able to take an English course there, you know, and participate and be, there'd be some sort of reimbursement back for it. I would say that's gotta be, at least a part of the discussion they should go forward.
Right.
You know, maybe it can be led by BOSI's.
But some of those kids may not want to take classes at a different high school.
But again, that may be the only option if the, you know, again, I'm saying that you have to explore different ways to be able to, be able to offer that program, then it comes with some other restrictions, but at least it's an availability versus saying, no, you can't do it because you can't take English.
No, understood. But when you look at a great program and there's two hours of travel time, I guess I don't even think it's a great program anymore. That is completely prohibitive for anybody who wants to attend Bethlehem High School.
For a two-hour, 20-minute program, you'll be on the bus for two hours.
Yeah. So, I mean, if I were the parent, I would say, you know, two hours a day, you know, that's sort of ridiculous. Is there any, you know, beside, I mean, I appreciate the explanation, but that explains why it's not at BOSI's, that doesn't explain why it has to be at Mahanesson, I guess.
They have a very high reimbursement rate, building aid from the state, it's something like 95% or so. So it was beneficial for them to do it. It wasn't costing them a lot, and then they're leasing the space to BOSI's.
Yeah, no, I know. It's just, I mean, welding, that's a good field, but you look at that last one, I mean, that's a huge opportunity area for kids who can get some, you know, education and training in there to, you know, I would imagine that job market is really a big one and growing.
Growing, for sure.
So, big problem to solve, but right now, if I were the parent of somebody who wanted to do it, I would say, how is that even manageable?
But the gaming and multimedia, I mean, couldn't, something like that developed here?
Right. And that's, that's one of the things we're looking at, is if there's enough interest in these programs, does it make sense to just start offering those type of courses here?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a program necessarily with a certification that we could use, although we are looking to get a few of those here in-house for other...
Right. One of the CT programs we're looking at in-house is to expand our culinary program. We're, that's gonna be one of our pathways. But certainly, in looking at, you know, we are looking to expand our Computer Science program, and the gaming, multimedia, web design could fit well into that and the art program.
Some of the other, the equipment would be difficult.
Sure.
Couldn't do it, but the gaming and multimedia.
And the gaming one, why do you even need to go anywhere? I mean, it's all a computer-based curriculum. Is there creative things that could be done? Like, I don't know what the Stero Processing Tech program looks like, but, you know, we have two hospitals within 10 minutes from here, and I just wonder if there are creative things that we can do with, you know, kind of curriculum development with, you know, healthcare providers.
I think they are using local hospitals, both Ellis and St. Peters, but I'm not positive about that, because obviously that's weird.
Yeah.
And I know that particular program is sort of certificate-based, where students are able to obtain a job in a hospital immediately after completing this program.
That's great.
So, and the other two pieces that we looked at were Tech Valley High School and the New Visions programs, just to, you know, it's been a while since we've really taken a close look at these two programs here. And the committee as a whole felt that Tech Valley really didn't offer much more than we feel we can offer through the lab school program, in that, you know, it's a project-based learning environment, and if there's pieces of this that we feel are really vital, then maybe they can be incorporated into the lab school program here. But we feel that, you know, the type of student that might be looking at a Tech Valley would also, we don't want it to be a competing interest with our lab school. If some pieces, we're still continuing to review the lab school, and if there's pieces of this that seem to fit really well there, then that's sort of the direction the committee felt made more sense than to start sending kids off to a very similar program in that it's project-based learning.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I don't know if you know, what are the type of classes that Tech Valley offer? Because is it just...
They're very similar to what we, what you would offer in a traditional school, the difference being they're taught through project-based learning, and many times they'll pair courses up. So the algebra course and the earth science course would be working in conjunction with one another, where each marking period, they might do a theme. So they're working on a project where, you know, the data piece of it's being handled sort of through the algebra class, and then the scientific piece of it's being handled through the earth science class. Or they might pair up the English class with the social studies class to do, you know, something with the history of, say, Albany, and they're pairing things up that way. So there's more interdisciplinary collaboration that tends to go on.
So it's not really like a STEM-based type...
Not necessarily.
...of curriculum? Because when I think of Tech Valley, how that's what I'm thinking STEM-oriented, which would be vastly different from the lab school?
No, it's not. It's really more the fact that it's project-based and interdisciplinary, you know, from my visit there, those are the two main takeaways I took, was that they're really trying to push the interdisciplinary piece and the project-based learning, non-traditional sort of lecture-type environment.
And their business partners that are very close, I mean, it's impressive. I mean, the business people that are involved with Tech Valley, in addition to just being at the Nennascales Science School there, they have the exposure...
Is that where it is?
Yeah, it's at the college.
So I do question, because the lab school is a lottery-based program, and not everybody gets in, depending on the applicant pool of a particular year. That would give them another venue if they wanted to, to enroll in Tech Valley. And I've heard from many community members that they were interested in it, but we didn't offer it.
Right.
So is there a financial reason why we couldn't allow it and see if it does compete? I don't, I don't personally think it would, but that's just my opinion on it.
Well, it's basically a BOSI, it's a BOSI's program, so the cost would be like sending someone to the Career and Technical School.
And they only allow, is it, do they only allow two still, from each district anyways?
No, some districts send more because they're, not all districts, a lot of the suburban districts actually don't participate. A lot, they have a lot of smaller schools that participate, though.
But initially, you were limited to one or two, right?
Right. Initially, we did have some students the first two years there.
And then, and if I recall correctly, they would do it for a year and then drop out.
Well, again, it's, I think, because you're there all day, I mean, this is, I mean, it's a full-time career and technical program.
You're going to a different school.
You're going to a different school, but some just started for a year and then they did not want to complete it.
I think we had one student gra- finish the program.
No, we had two.
I thought only one.
Well, how many years did we participate in it previously?
Two or three.
Just the first two years of operation, and those students finished, because...
It was in budget crisis 2009 that we pulled that.
We pulled it when we were laying everybody off and cutting programs. That's when we stopped sending kids.
We just said, the person, the students that were enrolled at that time, we allowed them to continue. We just wouldn't allow any new freshmen going over.
And is that still our thought that, because it sounds like it was budgetary initially, is that the same thought right now? Is it more budgetary versus...
The committee...
I mean, our committee felt, not only was it budgetary, but it was, more importantly, is, they didn't feel that it offered anything more than we can't offer here. For students that want an alternative education experience, the lattice, that's why we have the lab school. That's really what the committee felt.
In fact, they came over to look at the lab school, and they first put Tech Valley in place, right, to see how, and they kind of...
Yeah, they used that as a model.
Used as a model.
One of the concerns I had heard about Tech Valley was that the enrollment was very low and that there wasn't as much collaborative learning going on because the enrollment was so. Has that bounced back?
It has bounced back a little bit, and a study was done, somebody did a promo and looked at the whole program, and so they're doing some modifications and improvements to, just to, you know, to, you know, to probably compensate for that. So, yeah, I see it on a, like, upward path.
It would be interesting to find out what their enrollment has been over the last few years, because I know it was very, very low in the depths of the recession, but I don't know whether, how far it's come back since then.
Well, it's come back, it has come back, but not to the full, you know...
It's not at the target they had expected to be.
And then the final program that we took a look at was the New Visions program, which we had some folks from New Visions come present to the supervisors about two weeks ago. And what this program does is it allows students to go to, in three different areas, they go to St. Peters or Ellis and gain some experience right in the hospital, and then they end up with six college credits through that experience. We have Multimedia Design available, which is based at the Albany Times Union, but it sort of branches out and goes to some other venues. That has nine college credits attached to it. And then Long Government's right in the New York State Ed Building, which has seven college credits attached to it, plus anywhere from three to six through AP History courses. And we're sort of really just in infancy stages of looking at these again. You know, one of the concerns supervisors have is these, these are pretty intense programs, and you have to be very careful in making sure that students are aware that if they're interested in one of these types of programs, then they can also try to take five AP classes here. Because it pulls you out of the building for a couple days a week, you end up with a lot of work to sort of make up. They're, you know, they're great programs, but they have to be targeted to the right kids. You can't have kids trying to, oh, I'm gonna get six college credits in Health and Careers and do five AP courses here. It's just, it becomes too unmanageable as a workload. So we're still taking a pretty close look at these. We do think that has value, but we want to make sure that if we do begin to reintroduce these programs, that we do so carefully, because we don't want students in a situation where it becomes overwhelming. We also find that, you know, many of the schools that participate in these programs tend to be schools on the smaller size, similar to a Tech Valley, in that their high school doesn't have the wide array of AP offerings and college and high school offerings like we have here. So this is really their only way of getting college credits. So we want to take a close look to make sure that, you know, it would indeed serve our population.
Some do very well, though. The Long Government class, they won a statewide award in constitutional law, and I think also maybe one at the national level or right in the top couple. I mean, just did an outstanding job understanding constitutional law probably better than any of us. I think a lot of them, despite them small schools, are gonna end up as attorneys or certainly seem to be interested.
Well, the instructor is a licensed attorney, too.
Yeah, the instructor for that is an attorney. And then, you know, the multimedia one, they've had numerous students out of that program go to, like, New House at Syracuse, and some very successful students have come out of those programs. But again, it's, we have to, we just want to be careful that if we do decide to sort of go in this direction, that we're targeting the correct students, and students are fully aware that, you know, this is a, it's a pretty strong commitment, and that you can't try to do this and try to do, you know, 15 college credits back here as well. It's just, it's, there's no way you can manage the two things.
So would that, I'm just curious, would that be a conversation with the guidance counselors and the students, saying this is what the limit is, and that probably hasn't been determined yet, but...
Yeah, we're, like I said, they just came two weeks ago. It's the first time we've taken a look at it in a while, but we're taking a closer look at it again to see if there isn't a population of students here that would, you know, be more apt to do something like this as opposed to the traditional taking of AP courses. And it ties sort of the internship piece into it without having to do it as a separate entity. So those are the different things that we took a look at. I know we sort of answered questions along the way, but if you have anything else, I'd be happy to answer that.
You talked about who you would be targeting, but how do students find out about these various programs? And, I mean, when we were at the BOSI's annual dinner, there was, I think there were people from the New Visions program that had spoken. There was a student from another district that was gonna be trained to be an electrician and have a job when he's done, and another one working in heavy equipment and, you know, trades and whatnot, and the culinary people always do a great job there. How do we get, how do our students find out, or where can they get information? Is there a way that, you know, that there's a kind of a career fair or, you know, a course fair that they learn about these?
I mean, the best way our students get information...
They might not even think about that, they could be, could be made available to them.
Our counselors do a really good job of looking at students and talking to them about their future plans, and then that usually triggers whether or not to have the discussion about CTE programs. So it really happens through our counseling office. We don't necessarily have a job fair, you know, or a course fair, if you will. But if we look to add more and more programs, that might be something appropriate to do, especially if we're offering a variety of in-house versus going to the CTE Center in Albany, CTE Center, Mahanesson, New Visions. If we're looking at all of these options, you know, it would probably be appropriate to do something more formalized in terms of highlighting what the different programs are.
We're also been working with some local businesses in the chamber to, we're actually presenting to the chamber in June, the Chamber Board, about trying to get more businesses to provide internship experiences or field experiences for students locally who, you know, may have an interest in something but don't want to necessarily go to full CTE program or want to commit to like a New Visions, but just get a sense of an area they might be interested in for a semester or a full year or even a certain number of hours. So hopefully, we'll get more local businesses to want to participate in that too, with students.
And if there was a way that we could structure it, and I've been saying this a couple times, so that, especially if you are in your final semester as a senior, where you've kind of checked out, you're in college, or you know what your plan is for the fall, none of the kids in this audience are probably experiencing this right now. But I know lots of seniors do. I mean... But I know lots of seniors do. I mean, that final quarter is just, it's almost a waste of time.
Right.
Because they're so checked out. I think the teachers are even like, you know, you're going to college. I mean, if there's a way that they can, in their final month, or whatever the timeframe is, actually get plugged into some sort of internship or where they're actually, now they have something. They're starting to build their resume that is going to take them, you know, through their college years or through their, you know, if they're going into business, that's going to help them. So I just would love us to figure out some sort of co-op type model for, you know, that last leg of the senior year, because we all know, we've seen it. And I'm sure you see it here at the high school. It's got to be pretty obvious.
Right, some of the seniors have expressed an interest in doing that. And some of our internships through local businesses that have been successful have ultimately led to jobs for students in the summer or part-time jobs. So it can be a win-win in a lot of ways.
Right. Wouldn't people in the audience like that? You get some work experience. You don't have to go to school your final month. You're building your resume. There's some nods. I see some in the back.
Anyone else have any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation is a potential facilities improvement project, an overview of capital needs. Judy, are you, okay, you always change the agenda for me, so I don't know who's doing it ever.
So we'll have multiple presenters tonight. Not only me, but we also have Greg Nolte here with us. And then our architects are here, Ed McGraw and Krista Hannicker will fill in some of the more technical elements. We wanted to just give you a quick recap of what we had covered at our last meeting. This was really our kickoff for the concepts of what we think should be included potentially in our next round of work. Now that we've finished our twenty million dollar project, knowing that that really, from start to finish, with these community meetings through now, took close to four years. It's a lengthy process by its very design. The kickoff for this was our five-year facilities plan update that identified eighty-eight million dollars worth of work that could be done in the short to midterm timeline. Reminder that that document is up on our webpage, so for anybody who wants to read through that and see in-depth descriptions of the work, that is available for review. From that total facility plan, we came up with a shortlist of about thirty million dollars worth of work that we are focusing on as we're rolling out these discussions. That's about a hundred and ten different components of work that is included within that shortlist. But really, where that came from was just in consultation with the experts who know the facilities, who are experienced in identifying what the priorities are, what the conditions are, and ideally trying to maintain all of our facilities in good condition so that we're not responding to emergency repairs because something has failed us, but rather just to keep it in good condition and good working order. Thirty million dollars sounds like potentially a lot of money. We're not sure where we will land. It could be twenty million. It could be upwards of thirty. It's really going to come from these discussions and what we value and feel is the priority for the work to be done. But for whatever the amount is that we choose, sixty-eight percent of that, of those eligible costs, are going to come back to us in the form of building aid. I wish we had a ninety-five percent rate like Mahonassan. Ours is sixty-eight percent. But also, as an offset, recall that we have our capital reserve that the voters had approved, following the board's approval of that. And we expect to have approximately four million dollars in that as of the end of this fiscal year. And that becomes a funding source for us. So whatever the project amount is, four million dollars less is the amount that we would actually have to bond and issue debt for. The balance is what would be the local share. So currently, with the assessed values that we have in place, for a thirty million dollar project, a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar home would be paying just under forty dollars a year for that. So just so you don't hear thirty million dollars and worry that it's going to cause a thirty thousand dollar increase in your tax bill. So we'll continue to do these quick recaps as we go through the meetings. But as we said last time, that was the thirty thousand foot view, and now we're bringing it down into additional details. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg and to Ed and Krista.
Good evening, board. As Judy said at the last meeting in May, which seems like yesterday, we gave you that thirty thousand dollar, or thirty thousand foot look. Now we're down to about five thousand feet. I'm not sure if we're about ready to crash, but.
The oxygen masks have not dropped from the ceiling.
We have everything under control. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit more specifically about some of the highlights of the proposed project. As she mentioned earlier, we have our district architect, Ashley McGraw, here. Ed McGraw and Krista Hannicker as well. And they may or may not come up and talk, but. Okay, of the thirty million dollars, we broke the entire project down into six different categories. The first category being building renovations and educational improvements. This is the most exciting and stimulating part, and it's actually the largest part of the proposed bond, unlike the other five boring maintenance-type categories. Site work, paving, drainage, relatively self-explanatory. There's still a lot out there. Much of that component is paving around the district just from a conditions base. You have building envelope, which is roofing, masonry, windows. Structural components is the next largest component, followed by asbestos abatement. And building MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing categories. That isn't so big, in part because we're actually in very good shape. The other part is because we have an energy performance contract, which I'm going to talk a little bit about later. And we'll highlight where that project is.
Greg, I feel like for my twenty-eight years, we've been removing asbestos. How much asbestos is that?
You shouldn't have put it in twenty-eight years ago.
No, no, we've been removing it for twenty.
Yeah, and it is, it's a very costly endeavor. I'm happy to report that a lot of our thermal or mechanical asbestos, the stuff around the boilers, the stuff around the piping is pretty much all gone. And we're just left with kind of like floor tiles. So we are not asbestos-free, other than a couple of our buildings. But this, what we put in, if you, if, when you look on our five-year plan, we actually split it up into a number of years because it is a big number. So I don't know if I can, you know, I don't know how far away. I can probably give it to you more in a number as opposed to a percentage, but we are making great strides. You know, in the last bond, we did a lot of abatement, so, and a lot of that, we had critical, you know, critical. We had asbestos that was starting to fail and needing, needing attention, so.
So also this floor tile.
So would this be.
It probably won't be all removed in my lifetime, maybe yours. But we're making great, I mean, I can maybe quantify it the next time I will talk. The last, smallest component is health and safety and cameras.
Can I, can I just ask you a quick question? On the asbestos, I've heard community members saying, I just want to clarify. Have we ever included in a budget asbestos abatement and then not done it and moved it, pushed it off, and it wasn't done in a previous budget? Do you know that?
In an operating budget or in a bond?
In a bond.
No. I don't, I don't think in my time here, we've ever included it in a bond because it is so expensive. And we necessarily get the aid.
In fact, a lot of, as I recall, I think sometimes you might come upon it, upon it, and then have to include it because you didn't realize it was there or whatever.
Yeah, and we have a pretty good handle. We actually look at our asbestos every six months. But it never fails that we, we open up that wall to renovate that bathroom and sure enough, there's an elbow there that we didn't know about, or we go down in a crawl space way back in a corner that something was left there.
How, how much would we have to do to get rid of it all? Like, is it something that could be?
I can quantify that. And I think we probably have that number. Okay, so we can, we can report back.
It's also a little bit of a misnomer to think you're going to get rid of it.
That's what Diana was kind of saying.
And they also keep ramping up what hazardous materials are. And so, you know, now we have to make sure to replace the windows or to remove first the PCDCO or the asbestos. It's just sort of, I don't think in one false swoop, you can kind of go through and say, okay, we gotta work it off.
Okay. So there's different agents that they're now calling asbestos, so.
Well, we're calling them hazardous materials.
Hazardous material. So when you say asbestos, it could be inclusive of other items?
Um, for this project, pretty much was strictly asbestos. Okay, the development of this project was based upon conditions and identified needs, okay? And I created a slide based by building, just as a frame of reference for the most part. But pretty much your larger schools would have larger, larger projects. What you'll see absent from this proposal is any items related to technology. And that's primarily because in December, the district was awarded over two million dollars of smart bond monies. And pretty much in working with Sal D'Angelo, that's going to be able to handle our technology in the upcoming years. So that, that project is going to move independently of this project. I mentioned the energy performance contract earlier. I put this up primarily to talk about duration. This has been a very long project for us. We awarded it after a very long process, which I'm not going to get into here, but in October of two thousand and fourteen, about four point two million dollars of different energy measures, about eleven different energy measures, including a few boilers that we have, dehumidification systems at our pools, LED lighting throughout the entire district, some transformer upgrades and some other items. It took SED slightly over fifteen months to review this project, which is a very long time. And we just got that approval. So we have been working with JW Danforth to start scheduling this work and start talking about critical items. I believe, Judy, we are close to the financing?
Yes, in fact, that's going to be appearing on the June fifteenth agenda. Will be the resolution to authorize the leasing that will finance the purchase of this. Remember, there will be no net cost to the community on that because those lease payments are funded by the savings that come from the energy improvements that are made.
And of course, this project is going to run independently of the proposed bond. I do anticipate, I hope, that we're going to have some construction of the energy performance contract this summer. And then, of course, we'll be going into the school year and second shift work and all that kind of good stuff. And I'll report separately on that, because I know you want to hear about it, so. Highlighted projects, these are the more sizable projects. There's not one that's more important than the other. This is just pretty much about size, okay? We didn't, we accepted and talked a lot to different user groups to solicit information. What we found and what we determined wasn't done in a vacuum by any, any way. Whatever we decide on as far as the scope, we will continue to be fully involved with those groups as we develop the project even more. Okay, the largest one project of this proposal is the high school auditorium renovation. The auditorium was built in nineteen fifty-two. Over my many years here, it's gone through miscellaneous improvements. It seats about seven hundred and eighty people, depending upon the activity going on. And it's also used by numerous groups, interior groups, outside groups, town groups. Everybody uses that space, okay? We have had a number of conversations with Dave Norman, who, Dave raises her hand, is he here? He's in the back, okay, all right. I've had a number of conversations with him and other groups and people and teachers using that facility. Today at four thirty, we actually had a two-hour meeting with a good, a bunch of those peoples, with our district architect, with a theater consultant through Ashley McGraw as well, to basically continue to hear all the needs of this auditorium. I'm going to bullet a couple of them. Basically, the interior finishes need to be updated and the cosmetics. We've tried. It just, it needs, it needs an overhaul. Part of this project would include improving the sound system and the lighting system, not just the house lights or the lack of house lights, but also the theater lights as well. Acoustics, no matter what we do to the auditorium, you have to think about acoustics. And we learned a lot today about all the different performances and all the different ways potentially that we can change the acoustics, okay, depending upon what type of auditorium that we're looking for. Auditorium, I'm sorry, the stage rigging needs, would be improved as well. One of the first things I heard about when we came in was that this is used by all these groups. And I don't know if the air conditioning is on right now, but we don't have air conditioning in the auditorium. And that was, that was high on people's list as well. Trying to maximize the seating, the configuration. We have, we have three rows right now. It's very hard. And we just squeaked down the grand piano for certain concerts to move stuff around. It's very, very difficult. We're not sure if we have our maximum seating there with its configuration. So we'd want to look at maximizing that seat, the new seating that we would put in as well. There was talk right now, and I'll show you a picture of it. We have like a folding table that has very expensive sound equipment and lighting control equipment on it. We don't really have any type of director's booth or like a tech booth. So we've talked about creating some type of room, room for that. With this overhaul, we would improve ADA access and as well, take a look at the assisted listening system that we have. And I know Sal D'Angelo as well has already met with somebody regarding that, that system. A sound lock or a double door system that would basically stop sound going from the lobby into the auditorium during performances. This was something that as well was, was talked about quite a bit from, from the various groups. So all of that represents about a five point seven million dollar portion of the project, okay? What we have been hearing and starting to look at since we've started having these conversations over the past month was, number one, increasing the width of the stage or the opening or the proscenium. And I had to use spell check to make sure I got that spelling right. But so that we're looking at, okay, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Adding a mezzanine, adding room for like another two hundred and fifty seats, how is our capacity? That has come up in conversation. So I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more. And then as well, the height of the fly loft or the area above the stage or the lighting and all the stage rigging, all that stuff kind of goes up and gets out of, out of vision. That was another, that was another item that was brought up, and we're going to talk about that. One other item that was highlighted today is the flexible space. The space is used by a lot of different groups. There are times that maybe we need a bigger stage. There's a time that we maybe need some more seating. So in talking to our theater consultant, there are some systems out there that potentially will give us some flexibility with increasing the stage or putting it back down flush or having some seats that could be removed or added. So that was, it was actually a very good, very good meeting today. Just a picture of, of the auditorium.
Greg, just while we're on the auditorium, are we locked into the footprint of that or is there ability to?
Yeah, we had a lot of conversation.
Think outside the box, so to say, and, or are we kind of locked in there without doing a tear down and rebuild?
We are. To go deeper in stage, you go into your band room. And there's lots of utilities above that, that hallway ceiling and part of the boiler room is over there as well. Left side, you can't really go into that hallway because of the kitchen and access to your shop rooms. The other way, you could go out towards Delaware Avenue. You lose your practice rooms. That adds a very large. your practice rooms. That adds a very large element to the conversation, okay? And why would we do that? We'd probably do that for more capacity. And we're going to talk very specifically about capacity. And it's interesting what, what we kind of found today as well. So, so I think to answer your question, yes. Anything, you know, we could do it. Is it, is it fiscally responsible? Does it make sense? Do we gain? That's what we're trying to mold in this conversation here. Picture of the auditorium as it exists. The stage in front is actually an added stage that we use at different times of the years. It's called a thrust stage. It weighs about 4 million pounds and is very difficult to move around. And this is our director's area in the back. Not very well. I, I just took some quick pictures. You know what it looks like. So I'm trying to grasp the capacity question, okay? Right now, and again, this is through conversations with Dave Norman and a number of the groups here. As the existing capacity of about 780 is right now, we are okay for concerts, plays, musicals. We have Thursday through Sundays. A lot of times we sell out or a few times we sell out. Meetings and a lot of the other school activities. I know that when we have double class assemblies, it gets extremely tight in there. But I think we have squeezed potentially at times. Right now, we can't hold an ISMA event or even suburban council. They, council usually likes around 1,000 seats for that type of event and the sizes of stage and a number of other items. The big spectrum concert, I think as you call it, or the district festival that we have in Jim B., that, that of course can't be held in it as well. So that's, that's our existing capacity. Okay, so if we were to consider a mezzanine, okay? We actually have a preliminary design. We could add about 250 seats or so. This would help out with a lot of the layout of different items that we've talked about with, with the tech room and seating. And it's not just building a mezzanine, but it's, it's access up to there, it's stairwells, it's an elevator. It's, it's, it's a lot of stuff, but it, it's doable, okay?
Can the building support it? Because I know, well, leaky roofs, you know, that's one issue that we've had in the past. But remember, the ceiling collapsed? I don't know where you're going.
Yep, yep, yep. We did with the last bond, we did replace the ceiling above the auditorium, okay, which, which it needed it. But yes, I mean, it would be appropriately supported. It would go about a third of, of the auditorium. We talked about possibly with one of the designs that we looked at, bumping into the existing lobby a little bit that we might have to, all right? So again, we're at 5,000 feet here, just trying to get a handle on whether or not we want to proceed even further with looking at, at this concept, okay? But yes, it could be supported.
Is the ceiling high enough or would you have?
Well, that ceiling, no, that ceiling would be, at least a portion of the ceiling would be taken out, yes. So with that added 250, we could hold an ISMA event or even suburban council festival. But we share those events with about four or five other school districts that hold them. So we could have that event once every four or five years or so. And this is just a global look, okay? Dave, Dave can talk much more specifically to this. Even with that 250, we, we could never hold the district festivals that we hold the beach in there as well. So since that time, and again, this is a very rough estimate, but for a mezzanine, we're probably looking at an addition about $4.5 million for about 250 additional seats, okay? And actually, it was interesting that today's meeting, there wasn't much conversation or, or desire for added capacity. It didn't come up, okay? What came up, which we'll talk about in a little bit, was more stage, concert production, more this, okay? And I just wanted to show you one picture here. When we start talking about the next aspect of this is widening the proscenium. The proscenium is basically this opening of the stage. You have some columns here and here, but right now, behind the stage, it goes back behind here and back behind here. So if we can increase the width of this, it would help with, well, actually, I have it. It helps actually with performances right now. When the, when the curtains open, some of the kids, depending upon the concerts, they scoot out their chair to get around, around the curtain. For some of the larger concerts, some of the kids cannot even be seen because they are behind, behind the stage, okay? So with this opening, those side stages, those little triangular stages aren't really used much. We'd probably look at reorienting those, but you also have your, your means of egress out of the stage here. So we'd have to look at that, okay? But widening, and again, these are very, very rough estimates, we are looking at about $400,000, all right, for this widening, just to give you an, a concept here. We had a lot of conversations about increasing the fly loft and, and what that does for us. Right now, you're very limited with certain productions as far as how high you can get things up. We look to go up, I'm not even sure what we determine, maybe another 15 feet to get everything out. It actually does help with everything from musical productions to concerts to stage flexibility, which we talked a lot about because we can get a lot of this stuff off the floor and use it easily, okay? And we get into stage maintenance and storage of equipment and all that type of stuff. But so looking at increasing the, the height of this, that kind of ties into this rigging and going with a partial motorized type system, we're looking at maybe about a million dollar ad for something like this, okay? Last component that isn't on any slide, and we talked about this, is this recessed stage extension system that gives us some flexibility, which honestly, I think is going to be a great idea. But we just need to wrap our hands around this a little bit more before we, before we present any further on that. So that's the auditorium. I'm not sure if we?
I just have one question.
Sure.
And I don't know what the name of it's called, but the sound at the top, when you go to some auditoriums, they have those sound squares.
You have the clouds, you have, is that what we're talking about? Oh, the shells.
What was that?
Speaker clusters.
Speaker clusters.
No, it's where the sound bounces off of, is that what it, okay.
Clouds.
So have we talked about those at all or?
Yes. So would we?
Ed, use the microphone, please. Sorry.
So as we progress the design, we'll speak into the microphone.
Okay. As we progress the design, we, we've put in the estimate that, yeah, we have to have that kind of acoustic treatment. Of course, it's, it's very sophisticatedly engineered about what's reflective and what's absorptive. But we've, we figure in the quote unquote refurbishment of the auditorium, we're kind of gutting that out. We're going to give it a new look. We're going to make sure that the acoustics work better, both electronically and just from the pure science of how sound bounces around. And then we, in our discussion today, it was really interesting because of course, what we want a high school auditorium to do is a multitude of things, some of which conflict with the other. We want orchestral, we want vocal, and we want stage productions. So that's why we have the theater consultant come. So working with, with Dave and his crew, how do we balance that? And that's why Greg was saying, the conversation about the proscenium with what we can do with the fly and sort of what equipment technology is out there that allows us to have the stage be bigger when we need it, allows it to be smaller when we need it, allows us to bring in chairs when we need them. That, that seemed to be where our conversation sort of drove us. And that, as you said, Greg, we're trying, we'll get our, we'll get our arms around that and come back with some budget numbers by the next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions as far as the, the auditorium at this point?
Is there any thought about, I mean, it sounds like it's a lot of work. And what about any new construction and just having a second auditorium? Just throw it out there. Is there, is there any place where we could do a, where you're not refurbishing, but building what you really want to have and then have this as a more rehearsal type facility?
Yeah. So we could, we could work up a budget estimate for a, a new auditorium someplace else. I, I don't know how, I don't want to say cost effective because that's not up to me, but.
Again, I don't know, just throwing it out there as.
I think the cost.
Every option to be.
Yeah, sometimes new is cheaper, but not to have to build the whole structure if there was somewhere.
I think there's two issues there. One is the overall cost. I gotta speak into the microphone, sir.
One is the overall cost. And then the other is, there's going to be very little aid that'll be generated by building a new auditorium. So it'll pretty much all be local share. And that's why you don't see a lot of new auditoriums get built at schools, you know? If you build a new school and you got other classrooms and stuff, then you throw in the auditorium. It's, we have these archaic aids, aid formulas that we keep butting up against.
That's why we have the experts, like you guys.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I don't want to conclude today's meeting, but, you know, capacity of that auditorium was, was just not talked about a lot with, with the people that were there. It just didn't feel that that, they would rather spend their money in, you know, making the stage better for all performances and, and, you know, and, and everything that we do there. And that's where they would prefer to spend their money. Yes, and Dave said it, if, if money's no object, yes. It would be so much nicer to have a brand new structure and facility. One question that we haven't figured out is storage of stuff. It's a constant battle. We have underneath in the A Wing basement, but it's, it continues to be a problem. But with some of this, with the fly loft, that'll help with some of our storage needs because we don't have to store a shell that'll come down during concerts because we'll just, we'll fly it up. So there was, there was a lot of benefits, which I think we'll talk about at, at a later time, that came up today. And, and the, well, the, the flex stage that gives us abilities to bring the stage and have a deeper stage. So I don't think that it would be, and I might be going out on a limb, in our best interest to, to, to build a whole new structure. Because I think that we can create and accomplish all the needs of what has been expressed within the space that we have. Okay? You're up. Do you want your?
One of the things we did in the building condition surveys, identify the library media center. And we began to have a discussion, Krista and I, with Sal and Greg and the library media specialist and Sal, about potentially taking what's going on in here and how could we enhance it with design? And so a lot of what's going on is not just about library media centers, but about how people work, how people learn, and people are both students and non-students, and how knowledge is created and, and how design can help that. So really, we started to, we started to begin a discussion about flexible learning environments, collaborative learning environments, innovative areas for teachers and students, and reconfiguring existing space. And I pulled out a couple slides from that presentation to kind of give you a flavor of what we were talking about. Oops, sorry, buddy. Lower? That one? Okay. Yeah, I broke it. There we are. So there's, okay. So there we are over in the corner behind you. And there's a lot of great stuff that goes on here. And the times that I've visited, this library is packed. It's really kind of a center. And there's a lot of things going on, places where people aren't quite sure, should we be talking, shouldn't we be talking? Should we be, what should we be doing here? And I think what's happening now is that a lot of research has been done about how people work and how people collaborate and how people get innovative. And so we started talking about, how do you make, how do you encourage that? I mean, it goes on. You, you're not going to stop your students from creating knowledge, from collaborating, from, but how, how can we sort of enhance that by making places that aren't necessarily the way you would picture school to be? How do we incorporate different kinds of seating, different kinds of work environments, high tech, low tech? So, you know, this idea of how do people meet, how do people work, how do you incorporate technology both in these situations? And we're doing this really from grades K through graduate school in our design work and having places where people can bring their own technology and share it, collaborate with it. Ideas, this is a, this is a collaborative classroom we did at Syracuse University. But I think if you look closely, you know, your eyes drawn, of course, to sort of the G-Wiz electronic technology. But there's also a lot of, lot of low tech stuff that's going on, you know, marker boards, flexible furniture, just, you know, appropriate light levels, furnishings and finishes. And so also creating different places. So there's a variety of work environments where people can work independently in places that are comfortable to them, can meet formally, can meet informally, have drop-in spaces. And so really, the proposal is sort of just a, an upgrade and a rethinking of how space is used here in the library media center. I think the place is ideally located. I think there's plenty of square footage. And I think the spirit of what goes on here already goes on here. And the idea is to bring it, bring some of the research and knowledge that's been going on into this space. So just wanted to give you a flavor of kind of the vision and direction that that's going.
And Ed talked about that because there is a portion of, of the project under our room renovations that are educational improvements that talks about modifications to this library, furniture, and some other modifications around here. So that's why, that's why we talked about it. Okay. I'm going to touch about, touch upon some other sizable parts of, of the proposal quickly. We have the final phase of the high school drainage, yes?
I just have a quick question on the library.
Yep.
When you're like looking at doing those little things, do you ever get student involvement to see what they would like in the library?
We can.
Yeah, in the design phase, I'd like to, I think it's important to involve the stakeholders. And so, yeah.
Yeah, we had Manta Graves involved in our initial conversations. And again, once we, once we get down to ground level, we'll involve a lot of groups here with, with all of these facets of, of the design. Okay, high school site improvements. This is kind of like the last phase that we started many years ago, but we did a lot of work, as you know, with the last bond. This final phase is out near varsity and JV baseball fields. We would also basically replace the press box and the bleachers at the stadium field. We would pave the roadway from the event parking lot, which is off of Elm Avenue, over to the, the fire road. We would also increase some event parking. If you come off of Elm Avenue at times at night, when you're coming out of O and M, we use those fields quite a bit for athletic activities. And there are times that you have cars on either side of the road where I'm, I don't even think an ambulance could get through. So that's a, that's a good part of the, the high school field improvements. That's my pointer. So just to give you a frame of reference, and again, I'll be quick here. Okay, this is Delaware Avenue here. This is Elm Avenue. We did a lot of the main trunk lines on all of these fields here. We pretty much have the outfields of varsity baseball and JV baseball to do. And over in this area here where the fence field is, okay? The access road going into the event parking lot right here near all these lacrosse and soccer fields, we would line along one side with additional parking there. There has been a recent request about restrooms, okay? And maybe establishing some public restrooms out where our porta potty is, right out here. And we would have some storage out there too. So we don't have an estimate yet. That is not included in this project, but we'll work on it for the, whatever, the, the next presentation. Okay. Parking lot improvements. A lot of this has to do with the elementary schools because we've done so, so much work at the, the high school and the middle school. We did, as part of our building condition survey. We did as part of our building condition survey and our five-year facilities plan, we did a lot of testing, a lot of cores to evaluate conditions of it. Because depending upon its condition, maybe we don't have to do a full depth restoration, we can do a topping. But it wasn't just of parking areas, it was fire lanes, it was play, the paved play areas, sidewalks, curbs, basically a lot of the buildings and like I said, a lot of the elementary schools. And during that, that reworking, we would look at for what we could do, potentially traffic flow and parking capacity. Window replacement, not as exciting as the, the high school auditorium, but necessary. These are the locations of the various windows. There is a constant maintenance because a lot of these windows are used as rescue windows. And if you can't open them up, it's not your second means of egress and we get calls and we are fixing and band-aiding a lot of these windows. Of course, we would also put in energy efficient windows as well.
Can I, this is a perfect segue because I went to Elsmere last week. The doors that aren't doors.
Yes.
Can we get like signage on there just for purposes to know that it's a, not a door? Or is that something that might be put into this?
We didn't block those up. We can take a look at it.
I'm just worried it's a, a safety concern, like if you have EMS coming out and they think it's a door, but it's not a door.
Okay.
So I, I just happened to see it since you were talking about window replacement.
Yeah, I know, somebody mentioned that to me. I would hope that EMS would come through the front door, but I understand.
You never know.
I understand. This just gives you an idea. This is at the high school on D Wing, some of the structural steel that needs to be painted before the windows are replaced. There's a lot of windows. This is the middle school and this is actually in the original part of the building in the 32 area.
Does this complete all, because obviously we've replaced a lot of the windows.
Yeah, we replaced a lot. I'm not sure if there were any other windows that were identified in the, the five-year facilities plan down the road. This, this, I think I, I snagged a lot of them because of the, because of this need. High school pools, as you are aware, we've done a number of capital outlay projects at the high school pool. There's still more work to be done. The remainder of that work is actually included in this bond proposal. Such things as floor tile and wall tile replacement and patching. There's a very thin slot drain around the, the high school pool that is a constant maintenance headache. Part of the high school actually drains not towards a slot drain, but away towards the wall. It slopes the wrong way. The pool, pool bleachers are original. Included within this whole scope would be some miscellaneous equipment replacement and a lot of finishes in the, the middle school area. And I got some pictures as well. This is the middle school pool. You can kind of see within this the structural steel up there. Starting to get some rusting through that. It needs to be primed and painted and sealed. The tectum walls, it's just not a pretty pool area. We did some work over here a number of years ago, but it needs to just look nicer. This is in the high school. You cannot really see the, the slot drain that's right along here. These are the bleachers where a lot of people sit.
That was a 1985 bond issue and most artifacts were not asked to be turned.
Oh, okay. So we've, we've talked a lot. We have up on the website, as Judy mentioned earlier, we have our building condition survey, we have our, our very thick five-year facilities plan. We also have a detailed list of all of the 110 or so projects that are, are within this proposal, okay? Just if, if anybody wants to take a look at further information. So I guess now is the time to maybe talk about, do you need more information? What would you like to see? What should we talk about more?
I just have a quick question on the windows. Do the windows all have screens in them now?
No.
I know that was in a space, so is that going to be part of it or is there a reason?
Um, we would probably want a conversation because what we've learned is that even if you have screens, it doesn't keep bugs out because doors are left open. Bugs get in. They're a huge maintenance headache because they get vandalized, they get pushed out. We would have to have that conversation. It doesn't change with the cost or anything like that, but we would have to have a conversation on that.
So the que, the, do you want more information for the June 15th meeting? At the June 15th meeting, do you want a discussion about if we want to have any additional meetings in July and August? Do we just want to use the board meetings? You know, we talked about what's the, what's the proposed timeframe for when we might want to go out for a vote? So do you want to have that discussion at the June 15th meeting or you want to have it now?
I think we need to, at least my opinion would be especially a major, you know, you're talking $5 million renovation of an auditorium. I'd want to make sure that we had the community support for that since it's a, it would be a big component of it. So I would think we would need some public forums to have a discussion about what we're proposing and, and do we have the community buy-in for that?
Before we have those forums though, I think we need to see the various options and what the cost associated with those are.
I agree, I agree with that. But I'm just saying, I think before we make a commitment and talk about a vote timeframe, I think we need to make sure we know what the community is willing to support.
So like options like with or without a mezzanine, with or without additional seating?
Is that possible to bring back for the 15th? Some of the options that have now been discussed on the auditorium? So would that be helpful to hear at the June 15th meeting, the various options? And then we could have a discussion about additional forums or meetings and the plan for the timeframe?
And again, I think those options should be presented to the community too. When we did, when we did the fields, we talked about different options, you know, so.
We could try and, I mean, June is tough, but we could certainly try and send out multiple SNNs. I don't know, Mr. Norman, maybe you could reach out to some of the musical groups of BMA and see if they could have some representatives to hear that as well?
And we, we, I mean, if we, the forums don't have to be on a board meeting night. We could if, you know, again, hold a forum just to get some community feedback.
The other thing too is with some of the musicals, most of them are sold out, right?
No.
No, like one or two. They have a good turnout, but.
I think the, the seating seems adequate, I would say, being a theater. It doesn't seem like people are standing and waiting for a seat. Most of the time there's a, there's a seat.
No, I mean, I think I'm the one who kind of pushed for, can we move some of these showcase signature events? If we're going to redo the auditorium, does it make sense to think about building something that has capacity for our big signature event? Now, that was before I knew that 250 seats equaled $4 million. So that obviously is a huge price tag for building a mezzanine that wouldn't even include, that wouldn't allow us to move Spectrum or the district festivals. I, I do think, and I appreciated the comments about the conversations with the music department and how their focus was really not as much capacity issues, felt that that was probably okay. But looking for, to maximize really the student experience, I mean, not just the recipient, but a bigger stage. You know, all of those things add value to your performers and your musicians. So I kind of liked that that was the focus. But I would like to see kind of the, the detail and what it equals and kind of what, you know. But I think it sounds like you're on the right track in talking with the music department and kind of figuring out, you know, what's important. But I would do the, I like the idea of the call out to the BMA to, to get their input as, you know, parents, supporters, boosters that really are interested in bolstering and nurturing and supporting this program. And maybe there's a way for us to, through the SNN process, to get people to come out to these meetings and give us input. One thing I'm a little worried about is, you know, having special public forums and, you know, having five people show up. So maybe, and I think we talked about this before, maybe there's other venues that we can ask for input. Maybe it's using the BMA, some of those organizations or other, you know, electronic feedback loops. But I would definitely like to see more definition. I also think on the, on the LMC, and I liked kind of the, the concept focus. I mean, all of us have been doing college visits. All those libraries look very much like what you would see at the college level, which you're always struck by the design meant to, you know, which aims to encourage all different types of learning and studying and creative thinking, you know, whether it's group stuff or quiet time or this and that. So, and I'm glad we have a footprint here. I mean, you didn't put price tags there, but I'd love to see kind of what different options are and how much, you know, those would cost. But, you know, some of them look more sort of reconfiguring and aesthetics and, you know, the right kinds of furniture and technology capacity and stuff like that. And I would, I would think the students would absolutely love that. And I would love to see what their ideas are. And maybe we, you know, pull in some kids who, you know, are big library users, but also, you know, lots of kids that I've been taking on college visits notice, you know, things like the library and wow, that's really cool. They have, you know, whiteboards that do this and that. So I like that a lot, so.
I'd also want to see a little more, you know, what's actually happened to each, each of the individual schools, the elementary schools. I know you kind of, you were general, you know, site work paving.
Yeah, that's the list that is up on the website by building, okay? But we can provide it to the board as well.
Can you prioritize the list? So if we as a board are looking at it and we want to narrow it down, if we don't want the bond to be as big, just have options as to what could be pushed out, what can't be pushed out? I know the auditorium is more of a luxury item and a necessity at the same time because it was built in 1954. But the other items that we talked about that we don't have all the details, this was high level, maybe a little more.
The other thing I'd be curious to get some feedback on is, you know, because we don't really have a community center in this town, this auditorium could provide for a lot of needs in this town. And we're lucky that it's very well used by the school community, but there are certain times of the year where if we had a more professional auditorium, we could rent it out for events, concerts, that kind of thing. And that would of course help to justify some of the expenditures if we were bringing in some outside income. So I'd like to hear next time some thoughts on that.
I just have one more thing. I know Charmaine's not here, but she talked about rushing it and making sure there's a lot of community input, which, which I agree with because we want to make sure the bond's supported. And if we're concerned about timeframe, is it possible to just look at the auditorium at this point, since it seems to be a top focus, and not try to rush everything else? If that's really truly what the focus is and push the other off till next year? I know Judy on the bonding, you'd probably be better to speak on, is it more beneficial to, to group it together? Or could we do the auditorium focus on that one because it's a really large project? And then push the other stuff off till next year and then look at it that way?
Well, the, the auditorium isn't necessarily the top priority. It's the largest item.
Largest, right.
So I think that to not.
It seems to be taken focus.
Yeah, it, you know, similar to the last bond, we had larger, obviously, areas that we focused on. But I think there's certainly maintenance items that need to be taken care of that are probably more of a priority.
Okay, and that's what I was asking Greg to kind of, because I'm not, I'm not sure what's the priority and what's not the priority.
And I think when you start doing a, a project that is just focused on one building, you may not get the community's support.
Right.
For all, you know, where if you're doing work in all the elementary centers.
I just wanted to get so far.
Strategically, it may be better to include more to get the communities, broader community support.
Well, but I also think that I, what I liked about the list is there's kind of a little bit of everything. There's a little bit of the stuff that, you know, seems really kind of boring and, you know.
No, but I, I agree. So but I'm saying that's why maybe the auditorium may be supported by people at the high school, but may not be supported by elementary parents.
No, no, I totally agree. But it, you know, kind of, the list sort of includes a lot of different elements. Something that's a showcase like the auditorium. It's got kind of finishing, some work on the athletic fields, which were also part of the comments that we received the night of the vote, as well as, you know, some of that stuff that everyone knows you have to do. But who wants to spend your money on, you know, paving and that kind of stuff? You got to do it though. You know, windows.
No, it makes sense. I just want to see, I guess, the priority of this.
Some things might be hateable and others not so much, so.
Oh, right. I also don't want to do this every summer, right?
Yeah, and then you have you.
No, but is everybody comfortable with that? Like, is everybody comfortable with the 30, the ballpark's 30 million?
I think we'll go through the process and we may decide, you know what? Something isn't going to go this time and we'll, we can put it off.
And we also have, don't forget, we have the capital reserve fund that we can utilize if you choose to do so. And you have flexibilities to how high or how low you want to go with a project in regards to thinking about, you know, for next time, the summer pieces. We do have two scheduled board meetings that we could make the bulk of the meeting a forum for this. Where it's already scheduled and, you know, people can plan around them. So unless we feel the need to add something more, we could have the focus of those meetings be that. Anything else for the next meeting or?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Anyone who'd like to address the board on an agenda item? Item number nine, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through F. That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just to kind of thank you, you know, for the donations.
We're very, as I always say every meeting, we're very fortunate. We have a very supportive community, so. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item number 10, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, A through Q. That's a first and a second. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item 11, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, A through B. Any discussion? That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Other action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, A. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? That item carries. At this time, if, if anyone in the audience would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? If you'd come up to the microphone and state your name, please. It might come right out, actually. Yeah.
That works better.
Okay.
My name's Renata Reeves Ellington and I live in Bethlehem and in Del Mar. And I would like to address some, some, a statement made by one of the, one of the people that were making comments at the last meeting. And that is transgender children are confused about their gender. I've been working with transgender people for a long period of time. They're no more confused about their gender than the rest of the gender population, wherever it fits. And I'd just like to bring up a little background that the whole idea of a transgender person came about in the turn of the century and not this one. The 19th and 20th century, it was pathologized and it was told that it was indeed a mental disease and some people were locked up. It got better by the 50s, but it was still in today's world is looked on as a mental abnormality. It's not. And what causes the problem? Gender is formed in the third trimester, not the second when genitals are. And it's formed with part of brain morphology and a mixture of brain chemistry and biology of interaction with that. with that. And with that, people will develop a lens through which they're going to see the world. And when they're born, that lens starts having them look for tutors. And the tutor isn't necessarily the one that might be gender-aligned. So they end up with variants. So there's not, like in all of nature, there's no such thing as a binary. There's continuums and mixes, and they're constantly evolving and changing. I just didn't, transgender people are not confused. They know what they're doing, and they're just part of a general population. And the whole idea of a transgender person is one that the medical profession created and indeed doesn't exist. There are men, women, gender variant across the board, and everybody that's in the school or in this room. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Bergen Finkelman, and like Renata, I'm addressing some comments that were made by Karen Rice regarding President Obama's directive, the transgender students have their gender identity respected in all spaces in schools. Renata addressed, she made a lot of statements that we believe were flat wrong. Renata addressed the question of whether transgender people are confused, which they're not. The other thing she said is that she asked this board to resist following President Obama's directive until this is decided on a state and national level. And I just want to say, I wear a lot of hats. One of the hats I'm wearing tonight is my Bethlehem resident taxpayer hat. And the Dignity for All Students Act was passed, or it's called DASA for short, or DASSA, was passed in New York State by the Senate in June of 2010 and went into effect in July 2012. And as every one of you knows, that the Dignity for All Students Act required that students with, who are transgender be treated as a student whose gender is the one that they identify with. Although many schools, including this one, were able to understand what that meant, there was still confusion among a number of school districts. And so in July of 2015, the Board of Education issued guidelines that basically gave examples. If a transgender student, transgender girl, wants to use the girls' room, she should be able to use the girls' room. They went example after example, so that people could understand that treating somebody in their gender identity is the only way to treat them and not discriminate against them. So I want to, I want to say thank you to this board and to everyone who preceded you for respecting the Dignity of All Students Act and for following the guidelines that have been set forth. The, because equality under the law for transgender individuals can only mean that transgender individuals are treated as the gender they identify with. One of the things that's coming up a lot, and I think we heard a little bit of it from Mrs. Rice, is the bathroom fear that people promote. And in reality, the bathroom is a hot-button issue that people use as a way to justify discriminating against other individuals. This is no more a bathroom issue than having sexual orientation protections was a bathroom issue. We don't see, you know, gays and lesbians attacking people in the bathrooms anymore than it was a bathroom issue when people said, we can't share bathrooms with black people because we'll get diseases from black people. It didn't have anything to do with the bathroom. That was what they focused on in order to create fear among people, and that's exactly what has been happening in places like North Carolina and Kansas and other southern places. Fortunately, we're in New York, and there are transgender individuals, there are 17 states nationwide where transgender individuals have been protected for a very long time under the human rights law. There are no reports of issues with the bathrooms. There's no more crime in the bathrooms than there ever was. Men don't dress up as women and go into bathrooms to attack people, and transgender women are not attacking people in the bathrooms. Closer to home, New York City has had transgender nondiscrimination as part of their human rights law for well over a decade, and we don't hear about people being attacked in bathrooms because it is a non-issue. In the city of Albany, where protections have been in place for transgender individuals for over a decade, which a lot of people don't know, chief, former police chief Krokoff spoke to the state senate, and he said, people, every, all people are safer when transgender people have the same rights as everyone else. We have not had any issues with the bathrooms. And when we ask the city of Albany to add transgender individuals to the county human rights law, the county of Albany, our own sheriff, Apple, came and spoke to the county legislature and said, when everyone is treated equally, then everyone is safer. And so ultimately, the transgender people were added to the county human rights law unanimously by the state, by the county legislature. It's a large legislature, as most of you probably know. Every single person there, regardless of party affiliation, voted to add transgender individuals to the human rights law. And part of the reason is that we went month after month to talk to them, and they met transgender individuals, and they talked to transgender individuals. And I think most of the people who don't, don't know that they know someone who's transgender or don't know that they've ever met someone who's transgender, they don't understand that it is just another way to be normal, that our gender is in our brain and our bodies may or may not match what our brains are. And if you talk to people who know, you know, a lot of biblical stuff, this is not new. This transgender individuals have been around since the beginning of written history, basically. But I, and I will say, the other thing that Mrs. Rice said was that she believes that having the policy of transgender equality in the schools, which we have, which is not even up for debate, will increase the anxiety among other students and among the faculty by having to share a bathroom with someone who's transgender. And I know, I, the other, another hat I wear is as an attorney, and I've done name changes for over 60 transgender individuals. And getting to know them, you understand, this is a woman, this is a man. I don't know how anybody could ever be confused about it. It's not about their bodies, it's about what's in their heads. But also, the idea that students are going to be concerned, I think, is ludicrous. There are lots of students in here from, and I, I hope, as an attorney, I was told never to actually ask a question you don't know the answer to, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say, you know, who in here really cares if a transgender girl goes in the girls' room? You do? Okay. That's one. Okay, one item.
Could you, could you focus your comments to the board, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do, I apologize.
We don't allow a public debate. If you want to make a comment to the board, you can do that.
Okay. In any event, most kids don't care. Most students that I've talked to don't care. And as an example, you know, I have a friend who's transgender and who transitioned late, late in her life, and she has a lot of grandchildren. And after they got to know her, it was like, what are we going to call, call this person? And the answer was Oma, which is German for grandma. And so she became Oma to her younger grandchildren and grandma to her older grandchildren. But one day, a young friend was said to the six-year-old, like, what is an Oma? Because she was talking about her Oma. And the six-year-old said, well, an Oma is when your grandpa decides to become your grandma. And that's all it was to her, because it's not a big deal. It's just who this person happens to be. And that Oma is here with me tonight, and I doubt that anybody would have an issue going into, having her go into the ladies' room here at the school. The other, another hat I wear is that of a realtor. And as a realtor who works with gay and transgender individuals, I like, I'm very pleased to be able to say to somebody who says, do the Bethlehem schools discriminate against transgender individuals? It's really important for me to be able to say, and I'm happy to be able to say, no, they don't. They follow the law. They implemented the Dignity for All Students Act. And I just want to say thank you for doing that, and, you know, we appreciate it. I appreciate it, and all of the transgender people that I know also appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay. Moving on, future meetings. They're Tuesday, June 7th, they're at 5:30 PM, there's an audit committee meeting. And then on Wednesday, June 8th, the Board of Education will be having a workshop retreat type of session. We will not be taking, we will not be taking any official actions or any voting during that time. Our focus will be on superintendent board relations. It will be facilitated by John Yelgelsky, a local superintendent, who is well-known in the area. And then that will begin at 5:00 PM and go to 8:00 PM that evening. And then Thursday, June 9th, there's a BCEAU Process Committee meeting. That is at 6:00 PM, room B-115. All the meetings are in room B-115 that I previously mentioned, too. And then the next Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, June 15th, at 6:00 PM anticipated executive session start time, with a reception at 6:30 to honor our retirees. We have several, several staff, both support staff and teaching staff that are retiring from the district, and many of them have given their whole careers here. So that evening, we'll be honoring those employees that are, either have left during the year or will be leaving as of June 30th or over the summertime period. And then at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular Board of Education meeting on that. And one other thing on the, or two things. The moving up ceremony is what day?
Thursday, the 23rd.
Yeah, Thursday, the 23rd. Okay.
Oh, I'm thinking of the elementary.
Elementary, yeah. That's 9:00 PM or 9:00 AM here at the high school, right?
At the high school and lower gym.
Lower gym. And then on Friday, June 24th, will be graduation at the CefQ Arena at 6:00 PM?
6:30.
6:30? Okay. So, great. All right. We do not have a need to go back into executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Pig students, here's the sign-out sheets for you to come up and put your name.